Okay, we'll call this meeting to order and let the record show that all board members are present along with our attorney and with Mr. Glover, our superintendent. Would you please stand for prayer and pledge with Dr. Glover?
Let's pray. Good Lord, we thank you this day. We thank you for all the many blessings that you have blessed us with. We thank you for the rain that we have gotten the last few days, Lord. We just ask you to keep a hand out and rest tonight. We do the best interest of our community and our people. Thank you for letting us live in the greatest nation in the world, Lord. And thank you for all the hours you work every day to protect us. Help us do the very best we can and give all our children our best that we can. Amen.
To the flag and to the states of America and to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda. And before we take a motion and approve for this, there's a couple of items that needs to be pulled this evening. Underneath 4.01, item number 12, needs to be pulled at this meeting. It will be on the next board meeting. Also, on item 12.01, point 1, number 30, that item needs to be pulled this evening. 4.01, item number 12, 12.01, item number 30, needs to be pulled. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't see a 12.01, item number 30.
Number 30, I see.
It's on this list. Oh, okay. I thought he was talking about on the agenda.
Motion.
All right, motion made by Ms. Carlton.
I second.
Ms. Danielle seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Then we have the approval of the minutes of May the 18th, regular school board meeting.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agner made that motion.
Second.
Ms. Mathis, okay. And then we're coming down to the items of interest by the public.
Let's vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Now, we're down to items of interest by the public. Anyone has anything they'd like to address the board tonight? Would you please come at this time? If not, we'll move on. And by the adoption of the agenda, all the consent items were approved. This brings us down to item.
Since Wendy's here, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Our price on buses has really risen in the last couple of years. Is that not correct?
Based on what I have purchased in this seat, not that much.
Not that much, okay.
Probably prior to that. We've not purchased buses in a while.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else?
I have a question. It's already been passed on agenda. I meant under consent items, but I had a question on 4.10.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
I had a question on 4.10.
Okay.
Danny, on here, it says that the funding for this is due to help the students in regards to far as, I guess, course materials and different needs, I guess, to make sure that they're able to be in the program. But the last senate said that there was going to be allocation to cover things outside of student needs. So, do you know exactly? I looked on the attachment and I didn't really see a clear definition of that.
Well, it says, what I understood is it's to be able to, for the safety, like the equipment and sanitation, custodial needs is included in.
Well, it was saying deliver of instruction. So, is any of this going towards salaries or anything? Or is it just for like COVID-19?
From my understanding, it's just for like material or if they need new machines or hardware or things like that.
Mm-hmm.
As associated with kind of like equipment, social distancing, personal protection, sanitation, custodial needs.
Okay, so when it says far as students' needs, is this money been allocated for the students to turn around and use towards like, say if they need to buy books or anything? Because from my understanding, their classes are being paid for. But like if they have to buy books or anything like that, are the books given to them and taken out of this funding? Or are they issued money and then they have to turn around and buy materials?
That'd be, to the question, I'm pretty sure that they're allocated the money and they would get back and buy materials.
Okay. And I have one more question, not necessarily in regards to this funding, just in general. I know we've been getting a lot of funding from CARES in regards to being TBC. But like, have they whole process changed in regards to like when the students apply for those programs? None of the students right now having to apply for financial aid, right?
I think they're still getting paid.
They are still getting paid? Okay, so nothing has changed, it's just this is extra funding to support? Okay, all right. So, they're still getting their normal funding down there? Being like, we're still getting our normal title funding, they're still getting that normal funding? But is it all getting spent?
Everything, yeah, Ms. Tillman spent every bit of, Ms. Tillman can spend money.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Tillman can spend her money.
Well, I just asked because I know I was talking with Ms. Sharon the other day, and I know Ms. Sharon said that we've had a lot of CARES funding come down. And she said that this summer, she was trying to make sure we use some of our title money because only a certain percent can roll over.
All these money's different.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's what I wanted to ask.
All right, this brings us down to 12.08, the recommendations, reappointment of our annual contract personnel, teachers for the 20.
Do we need to do 12.01, number 30?
That was to be pulled from the agenda.
I didn't pull it, so I don't know.
All together, okay, not to take action on.
No, 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 those would be back on another, I'm sorry, I didn't explain.
You said pull it, but I thought that was, because you meant, okay, that's deleted, okay.
I make a motion.
Okay, make a motion by Ms. Agner. Ms. Mathis seconds this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. This brings us down to 12.16. This is a job description, an updated job description.
We didn't do 12.08.
I'm sorry?
We didn't do 12.08, did we?
Yes.
Which we just did.
Oh, I thought you was doing something else. My bad, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is a job description, updated job description for electronic systems technician instructor for the post-secondary career and technical education program at BBTC.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes a motion for this. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. This brings us down to item 12.17. We have two items here. Superintendent Glover is requesting the approval of suspension of an employee in position 004163106 from May the 17th to June the 1st. With pay, the employee must participate in an action plan.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Mathis seconds this.
Can I ask a question? Now, this complies with our policies and procedures and our collective barg, terms of collective bargaining for our process, right? Okay.
Okay. All right, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item number two, Superintendent Glover requesting the approval of suspension of employee in position 004152211. Without pay for five days starting May the 24th, employee must participate in an action plan.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Mathis seconds it.
I have, I have a question, same question that's followed with the policies, procedures, and collective bargaining plan, okay?
I have a question. This action plan, is this action plan, is it going to be in line with something with the bargaining? Or is it something coming straight from you, Superintendent?
It's from the district.
Okay.
And they're not like, there's different courses related to events, so those are assigned as part of the legal plan.
Now, did either of these employees had to sign something with this understanding that they had to complete something? Was there a timeline or anything?
By the beginning, so.
Okay.
So, you said it's with the district, or is it actually with their school?
No.
Plans.
The plan.
You said the plan was the district.
There's three courses that.
Okay, so it is technically through the district, not through the site, okay?
Is the plan something we got in policy? Or you said it's in line with the district guidelines, so it's something from policy, right?
Yes, from our safe school.
Okay.
Different classes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Item 12.19, Ms. Brennan, principal of the Taylor County primary school, is requesting teacher aide position 902452201. A seven hour, nine month to be changed to a CD paraprofessional position for seven and a half hours, 10 months, starting on the 21st, 22nd school year, due to the enrollment and adding a classroom.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Mathis seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes, Danny, I got a question. Since this is for, this is going to be for the pre-K program? So, we, basically, we have enough enrollment to support this position? So, are we getting rid of this teacher aide position? I mean.
It's a position that was vacant this year, and our enrollment very much in the pre-school is full during the regular school year. And so, we're adding a class, and so, we need a lead teacher position, a non-instructional position for that classroom.
Okay, so like, when schools start for 21, 22, and y'all get enrollment? Because you know, y'all, I know the little age tend to needs a lot of teachers aide. So, y'all don't think y'all going to need this then? Or y'all going to be good?
We still have those, we still have the aide position as well to go in there with the lead teacher. So, there will still be two adults in the classroom. We have another aide already.
I'm saying, y'all still will have an aide where you pulling this one from?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll be good.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Item 12.23, Superintendent Glover is requesting a change to the guidance counselor position 014161105, an eight hour, 11 month, to Taylor County Elementary School MTSS coordinator for the 21, 22 school year.
Motion.
All right, motion by Ms. Carlton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mathis. Any discussion?
Question. The guidance counselor in this, is this a change of a title? Or do we need another guidance counselor now?
This is a change of title by what she was actually doing. So, we're looking through elementary school staffing to hopefully have something else in place about their services.
Okay, sure, okay.
Anything else?
So, that puts, the employee didn't transfer. I thought the employee transferred, but the position stayed. So, now, we no longer have a guidance counselor? I'm saying the position, not the person. So, we giving up a guidance counselor?
Yeah, because she was in a guidance counselor role, but it's not been doing guidance counselor. They've been doing more MTSS, so we look at what she was actually doing to what, if it said she was doing, we needed to align it up more favorably, to what she was actually doing.
Okay, well, I, I thought last school term, they wanted a guidance counselor at their elementary school.
We are looking at how to restructure because we have them on a staffing plan. So, to make sure they stay in their staffing plan, we're looking to see how they can provide their services through another avenue within their staffing plan.
Okay.
Right now, you really don't. You have on paper guidance counselor, but you don't have anybody providing their services. So, by restructure, we can actually have somebody providing services.
So, we don't need a guidance counselor at that age? I don't know, I just, I.
We need an MTSS, and you got it. So, we're having to restructure how it's lined up, I guess you would say.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. This brings us up to item 12.26. We have two items underneath this. Item number one is updated principal and assistant principal salary schedule for the 21, 22 school year.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion?
Danny, can you give us some information regarding this?
Yeah, what.
I know that.
What may have been missed, Mathis, you know, brought our attention, is that when we look at the salary scale, actually, the Steen Hatchie principal position was actually paid less than AP.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we also go down, because it is an isolated school. So, the isolated school bill does provide extra funding to Steen Hatchie School. So, we took that into account. And we did look at some of the other schools, you know, like Yankton, I called to look at the salary there to be more in line with what we should, you know, just be more in line with what we should be paying. So, that's how I thought we needed to revisit and fix it. So, we came up with pretty much as I have a median between what AP makes and what a principal is. So, we're kind of, we're a little, not exactly in the middle, but there's like $8,000 difference. And I think this is going to be like around a $5,000, $5,500. So, it's more in line with, I guess, like you say, when we took everything into account.
So, we just looked at the AP and not a principal?
Right.
But Mr. Bray is a principal, right?
Right.
But we only looked at an AP salary?
No, he was below an AP. So, what we did, we took an AP and the principal and met in the middle. Because it was so low.
But Mr. Bray is a principal, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure he's not going to, you know, there's a lot of debate.
I mean, I know it's an increase, but the man is a principal, right? Okay.
There's a lot of debate back and forth.
All right.
You know, on the number and his lower number, but he also doesn't have a re-encouraged guidance counselor, things like that.
But he's invested in his school, and I mean, he's brought his whole family, right? He four to five miles out, right?
About two miles from his school.
He four to five miles outside the county, right?
Oh, yeah, from here, yes.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that's.
But that's our operations, but I, I just, I just want a little more understanding.
As I told Ms. Mathis, it's a good start, and I'm moving the right direction.
Yes, it is, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Superintendent Glover is requesting the adjustment in salary for the principal of Steen Hatchie School and for the 21, 22 school year. And the starting salary is 74019. And there again, I think it's done been discussed, but the salary should be adjusted to this amount plus any performance pay increases he's already received. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Ms. Carlton makes the motion. And Ms. Mathis seconds this. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. 15.01, this is, tonight would be authorization to advertise for a public hearing. Policy 7.13, certification administrative and instructional personnel.
I need some clarification.
I'm sorry?
I need some clarification.
You want to make a motion for discussion, then?
I motion for discussion.
All right, you second that? Okay, motion second been made for discussion.
I think it's a short merger, let Ms. Pugh get the more in-depth bit of week. This is going to put us in more in line, or actually will just put us in line with the statute. There were some changes that we found, so we wore that line. You know, it's very, I would say it's very difficult to understand. Probably in 30 days, we're going to definitely need a workshop on CARES funding, have to run for 30 days, get a public hearing. So, it's probably the same time as a budget hearing. So, to try to get a better understanding, because it is so confusing. I mean, we could workshop it. I'm going to have to ask for a workshop just to keep y'all up to date on CARES funding. So, just know that we can do that. But I'll let Ms. Pugh get the more in-depth.
But this is all tied to because of CARES funding?
No.
Actually, I was talking about two things. This is the line up more with statute.
I got you, okay.
So, back in your zone, the policy was changed in statute to give people that held a temporary certificate, three years to pass the GK. Our policy stated that we only had one year to pass the GK. So, we're just aligning our policy so that it matches what state asked of us. And it just makes it a little bit easier for those teachers. It gives them three years to accomplish everything. And everybody's on a different pay. Some temporary teachers come in and they ask two or three pages of them to become certified. Somebody else may come in and it may just be a subject test, subject area test, and the GK test, and not much to it. But basically, they're giving you three years to take care of all of it.
Okay, so we have to do this in a public hearing to be able to change the policy, is what you're saying? Okay, I understand. The question I have is just, the Florida statute says we have, I mean, tells us, gives us the guidelines. Why do we really have to have a policy? Because the statute ties our hands. All of our policies, a lot of them have that statute. This one literally is kind of operational.
All of them, all of them are pretty much set in statute.
Yeah, most of the policy is. So, but we've got to have a policy to, for them to be able to look at for the district.
I think that they send us sometimes to be confusing. So, it's like, we take it, we get it from, you know, our consortium, Pace, or from other districts, and see how they break it down and make it a little bit easier to understand.
We got this, I would say, work, work on color.
Okay, okay. How we know why color got this type look, right?
I actually found last week, I called Pace, and there is, and I'm pretty sure anybody can go in and look at it. It's all the updated policies that come down from the state legislation. And so, I was telling Danny about it. And it gives you, you know, it shows you in red what's been updated. And so, that's been kind of nice to know that I'm not, I have to sit here and figure out a policy, when I could just go into their website and find those.
Well, I thought this was a service that we receive from Pace, that whenever there's a statute update, that we receive an update as well, so.
But I'm just saying, I'm learning. And a lot of times, we depend on the attorneys from Pace and different people. But this was just nice to know that it's already updated and in there. And I could pull a policy and just put Taylor County School District on it.
And that's what we pay them that big money for every year, to help us with this kind of stuff, so.
Well, I noticed a couple typos in this. Y'all got this second paragraph item twice on here, so y'all might want to update it for you, publish it for the 28 days. You got the second paragraph twice in here. But I did have a concern that at the time that we're updating, I understand that we want to go ahead and align with our current policy far as new statute. But session just ended, and I know there's been some more changes to teachers requirement. So, I'm wondering like, will we be making a change in a couple of, well, another month or so? Because I know July 1st, everything is going to go into effect. So, do we want to publish this without these new changes? Or do we want to go ahead and publish this and just amend when the new changes come along?
I feel like it's important to go ahead and get this advertised. Those amendments may not be directly kind of this policy. It might follow up under a different policy that we have.
Well, what they presented to us, as we get tampered, it is in line to teachers' requirements. It's actually giving them a little more options as to versus where it went from one year to three years. Now, it's giving them some, another option far as, you know, how they could become certified without the GK. So, that was the only reason why I'm asking if we're updating in another month, if this is passed by the governor, it is going to go into effect July 1. And so, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I have no problem with that. But I think when these new things come down, and if Pace attorney has the time to look, I mean, take the time and look at it, I think we need to go ahead and add that to our policies as well. Because it does give teachers more options in regards to how they become certified.
What, the workshop or the public hearing would be after July the 1st?
Just because of being, I want to say, is like, if you read the certification manual, it is a booklet. And so, just because they changed something in that manual, those policies, doesn't mean it's going to be stated in our board policy.
Well, I think from what was presented to us far as like, for instance, with GK, now, a teacher can get hired instead of take the GK. But from my understanding, this recent session is coming down that teachers got to have their GK before they get hired. So, I think that's will be something we would need to put in our policy.
The new rule could say they cannot be hired until they have the GK.
Right, that's what was explained to me down last week in Tampa, as well as it's giving them options where if they have a higher level degree, it's kind of like if they have a master's or a doctorate, that substitutes for the GK.
Right.
So, that's what I'm saying, is it's open up more opportunity for teachers.
The thing is, what you just said, that they cannot be hired until they pass that GK, that sounds like you're going backwards, not helping teachers.
But she also said that if they have a master's or a doctorate, that GK goes away.
As a teacher.
Well, you, I'm not saying, were you sending that bill? Because we did not get that out of there.
Yeah, well, I, they gave it to us in ours, and because I asked specifically, because I know like, like Ms. Pugh said, you know, in 2019, that's when the change came from one year to three years. Yeah, when I look at it, it's on there. But I actually went up to a lobbyist and asked her.
934.
Yeah.
934.
Yeah, but I mean, I, either way, I do agree with Ms. Pugh. I do, I definitely think our policy need to be updated. But at the same time, if, if this new, if this is coming down in July 1, and it's going to run into the same window of advertisement, I'm just wondering if we still going to need to change the language that's in here. I mean, add that to this, yeah.
It's not, it's not in our session summary.
It's not in here.
934, unless somebody else sees it. I don't see it in our session summary.
Well, the lobbyist, she, like I say, I went up to her and I asked her specifically, was there any other changes? Because I knew those changes. We, I knew far as our district, we were starting to make preparation in regards to SB 7155, and that's what she explained to me.
HB 71?
No, that's what it was in 2019. It was SB 7155. I don't know what it is this time around. I know.
What was it?
934.
Florida colleges, which that is true, Florida, most of Florida colleges will not let you graduate until you pass it.
I don't know if it passed, so.
So, it's not saying you can't teach, it's just saying if you have an education major, you won't graduate until you pass it.
That's not the way she explained it, but that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know. Either way, like I say, I know it's going to still bring for change it when it comes to teachers and their requirements. So, that's why I was only asking, but I mean, it's at the pleasure of the board if we want to go ahead and advertise it, if we want to wait.
I'm reading the bill here, I'm not sure. It's talking about education majors, qualifications.
Okay.
Is it HB or SB? 934.
SB.
SB.
It's a Senate bill.
So, we're good to go ahead and then, and start this public hearing? Yeah. You still wouldn't do it till after July the 1st? Right, but you got to advertise for it, so they'll know it's coming up. So, we could make an amendment at that time if we needed to.
Yeah.
So, have we got a motion on this?
We need, well, we got a motion for discussion. We need to change that for action.
I'm making a motion.
I should make a motion for action.
Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody?
Well, we made sure we delete this extra paragraph before we advertise it to the public.
Okay. This brings us down to item 19.01. This is a discussion item, leadership update. And I guess Mr. Glover.
First, before we get that, I could have Ms. Lawler, something that we approved with some CARES funding. I think she is the highlight. An improvement we're going to be making about transportation. Two highlights I think are really neat for our district.
What'd you call her?
Ms. Lawler.
Alder.
Oh.
So, we're excited at transportation.
I can see that.
I thought you said Ms. Laura. I was like, say, her name does not know Laura, her name. I was looking at that Laura. I'm sorry.
We are going to have some new camera systems on our buses from August. There are going to be some great cameras. We'll be able to see almost every inch of the inside of the bus.
Wow. Stop down too.
And the outside. But our Sayon rep is calling us the super bus of Florida. These predictive stop arm that we are getting, he's telling me that we're the only district with every bus with one as of now. They are, they're gonna, I guess that they, they operate on motion. So, at a stop, if you've got a kid that's going to cross the road, but you've got a car approaching, the bus is going to start hollering at the kid and making all kinds of sounds to get the child's attention to stop. So, we're excited to see this happen.
Unfortunately, we have buses stopped and cars go around. If the kids come to turn the bus, they can't see. So, this will sound alarm. People should not be doing that. But if they do, you know, the alarm will sound, letting the kid know not the crossover.
Ask the children not to run.
And take pictures.
Ask them to walk slowly.
The buses now will be 360 degrees. So, if anybody runs stop arm, or if they are in an accident, you know, we'll have cameras in the emergency room, you know, to prove it could be a fall or anything like that.
Well, will we get to record? What it say? Will that like be one of your employees' voice or whatever?
We are going to.
So, it can say like she say, you tell them.
Are we going to work with the Sheriff's Department to report these things so that we can get some fines going, and some people slowed down, and some people stopped?
We have been working with them.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Good.
A lot of times, if there's a marked car near a bus, nobody's going to do that. But we have had some unmarked vehicles write some tickets. So, people are just, it's real bad out on 27. And...
That's where one little boy got killed too.
They don't stop for nothing on 27. At my grandmother funeral, they, one car, it was a line of cars stopped, but it was one car just speeding. And I was like, they don't even paying attention.
So, they don't pay attention to the bus either. And some people are confused at when they should stop.
Yeah.
You know, out there, it's four lane, there's no barrier. Everybody should stop.
But you know, typically, you have the cars, you know, doing a procession. And I mean, this one car was just steady going. And I had an out of town tag, but I was just like, they don't see the officer.
Okay. So, we're working on a parent app to go in line with our GPS systems on the buses that were installed a couple of years ago. There's an app that we're working on to have up and running by August, so that the parent can see where the bus is at.
I love that so much. It's not called the where's, where's my bus at? Yay. I'm so proud of you. I mean, I love this too, but I'm so proud of you for both of these programs. Thank you so much for doing that.
But it's, it's not just going to be bong, bong. Is it, can it say like what Bunny said? Can it like tell them to stop or do something?
It's going to tell them to stop. There's, I mean, yes, we can.
Could we, could we like do a list? I know I've seen it in the paper. I've seen it in the paper where it says, don't come around a bus. But what you just said about the four lane, and the fact that if it's no barrier, everybody needs to stop, I don't think most people know that.
A lot of people don't know that. And, and we've printed it in our back to school paper before. And we've, yes, we've put it on.
But that gets so, so lost and everything, because there's so much information, and that's the least, so if we could just put it somewhere where it's kind of drilled to them?
It would need to be the newspaper, because I mean, most parents, it's public. The public does not.
I'd be surprised at the people that, yeah.
Would you post it electronically multiple times through the first couple of months of school?
We put it out there, but it doesn't.
But it's, it's usually not the parents that are not stopping. It's usually people, like she said, out of town person or something like that. But if we could educate people on it, that'd be great.
Angela, she got really good picture and diagram.
All the buses going to be capable for the parents to keep up with the bus as far as?
Yes.
Okay.
That's awesome. Thank you, Wendy.
I'm so excited about that. Yes.
Mr. Clark, did you want to give a quick update about the, which I've been working on?
Yes. Mostly with Ms. Valentine, also Mr. Anderson, and also with our insight, our district web provider. We have notified me, up and running. We're working out a few bugs on it. So, that comes July 1 is when we're going to roll it out. Ms. Valentine thought, since that'd be the new fiscal year, that would probably be the most appropriate time to roll it out. And so, anybody that's interested in getting bids or quotes, or seeing what we're out there, they can go online, fill out a brief form electronically. It goes to their email. They, of course, like everything else, then have to, you know, reply to the email that they get. And then, when a bidder quote goes out, that relates to them. Either Mr. Anderson, Ms. Valentine, or whoever's related to that bid, will go into the system automatically, be able to grab those people and say, here's the information, here's the link, so that they'll be able to have that notification about it.
And it'd also be posted on the website for somebody?
Yeah. It's also, yeah, where it's going to go is they'll go to the website. Yes, ma'am. And we'll also have a new page related to bids. We'll have a new section related bids up on that day also for bids that are open and bids that are awarded. And notify me.
We were discussing this earlier, and I'm so pleased with this, that we're going to be more modern. But it's like I told him, and I heard statistics the other day, we were, used to be 900 people a week moving to Florida. Now, it's 900 a day. So, we want to be modern, so that people that look, are looking to come to our little town, to live here, to bring their business here, or whatever, they're going to see that our district is a good district to be in. Thank you.
The other update I was going to give, and Mr. Bray will speak to that in just a second. But, you know, right after we ended school, the administrators and directors, we were able to go to a leadership training that was sponsored by, by Izzard. So, we were able to go to Panama City for a couple of days and have some intense training. What we did, and we went to focus on this training, is we tried to focus on three areas. Number one, we did mental health for ourself. So, there was, Mr. Peavy was there to provide mental health. Two, these, to all of us, because the job is very stressful, and they need to take care of theirself. We also looked at our BPI, something we have to do every three years through DOE, through our ESC department has to do the, the BPI. And so, we went through and looked at that. And then, we also looked at our LRE and our LEA. So, that's, that's the numbers of our ESC kids who are in self-contained. But the state keeps up with that, is how much percentage those kids are with the general, their general ed outside. So, we took all those things together. We put that together over three days. One day was setting goals, where the administrator sat down, and they set goals as high school and middle school set. We first set district goals, then we set school goals, and then we went all the way down to setting the personal goals. I do want to thank Ms. Alice from Izzard, because she did, she came in and paid for our hotel, and we went out and got donations for the meals. Now, a lot of people say, why did you leave? You know, that was the last day for teachers, and when you go. Because it was very, very expensive. The rates were going to double like the next week. And when somebody tells you they will pay for something for free, I think we need to take, take advantage of that. I think you'll hear in a minute how beneficial it was for this group to get away and, and to learn. And the other thing I don't think a lot of people realize is when we travel, we work very, very hard. I spent a lot of time working with Alice to be able to get this paid for, so it was no cost to the district. And we spent a lot of time, Lacy and Shanna helped, reaching out to some of our vendors to say, hey, we're going, you know, we're going out of town. Will you provide, will you pay for our meals? I was at a superintendent meeting last week, where almost all districts do this. And they wasn't getting donations. They were paying for it out of their general fund. And almost like when we're, take our, the leadership, Pace Leadership Meeting, we have worked with Fiddlers and Izzard to pay for our registration. So, I know sometimes people, you know, want to give us a hard time. But no, we work very, very hard on getting that stuff paid for, because we don't want to take away from teachers. And I hope teachers understand that a lot of districts aren't doing that. So, you know, some of the, some of the things that we're saying was very disheartening, as we worked very hard. And I will tell you, Alice, you know, pays for a lot from Izzard, and she heard it. And I'm afraid that it could cost us in the future what she does to this district, because some people were, you know, so ugly about something that the administrators went on to build their leadership. We all know this board has to have great leadership, and these principals and directors also have to have great leadership. And you know what? They're young, they're willing to learn, and they're eager to learn, and they love to work hard. But one thing that Mr. Peavy brought up is that most principals burn out within three years. And that's one thing why we took this time to get away, because I feel like we have a great team here put together, and we do not want any of them to burn out within, within three years.
Did something happen?
No, we had a great time.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm lost. Like, I don't.
We found out, and they brought Gallup in. And I don't know if you're familiar with Gallup, but it's extremely expensive. We would never have been able to pay for this on our own. And the reason Izzard took a special interest in us, because they had some funds left over. And I think y'all will know, I'm not afraid to ask, to go out and ask for money, to ask for them to help pay for things. And I ask, a lot of districts don't ask. And that's, that's their fault. I look at it. You know, we reach out to FIN, we reach out to Izzard. There's several projects throughout the state that falls under the B's umbrella. And you get to know those people, you build relationships, and you ask to be able to help us. So, it was a wonderful time that we got to go just learn from each other. Like I said, Gallup came in and showed us our strengths. And so, we know a lot of our strengths of each other. And then, you know, it talks about how your strengths can also be your weaknesses.
Can I ask one question? You said Paul Peavy. Now, did he just provide y'all mental service, mental? Did he do that while y'all was on this trip? Or is he providing that for the district?
Two things. He's going to be at our next meeting to speak about what he's providing through the district. Izzard worked with him to provide some services to the district. But I don't know if you know Paul's background. He's a motivational speaker.
Yeah, I know his background, but I'm just wondering, like, he's not serving employees and kids, are you?
Yeah.
Izzard, and Izzard paid for him to go to be, to help work with us.
I ain't talking about, I'm, I'm talking about outside of this conference, like he's doing this ongoing.
Yes. Yes.
So, the employees are not going through like an employee assistance ship, employee assistance program and seeing somebody? You're seeing somebody that's here?
It's, so Izzard was good enough that if we had went through our own program, we would have had to pay for it. So, Izzard, he's going to, he's going to go through all this at our next meeting. So, Izzard actually contracted with him, because we felt a really heavy need this year, that our employees needed some, you know, that mental health, somebody to talk to. So, Izzard paid for him to work with our, work with our teachers. And so, we're working, we're going to have something to come back to you for the board for next year. But he's going to come talk to you about what all he's been doing that's really been at no cost to the district for our employees, and what we have opportunity to move.
So, this is outside our employee assistance ship program?
Yes. And that's one thing we've took a real hard look at, where I've really took a hard look at, because our employee assistance program is saying, hey, I need help. And then, you go to the doctor, and you're kind of on, on there. You know, look, and we need to make sure we're providing services as a district to take care of our employees. And so, we're going to be beefing up that, that program. That's one thing he's going to talk about when he comes next meeting. So, I'm sure he can answer a lot of those questions when we're here. But also, because teacher burnout during this time is extremely high. You know, there's been a lot of stress going on. So, we felt like we needed to provide some services. And so, what he does, he provides like two or three initial. And then, he'll, then he'll say, okay, I feel like you need to go to that next step to maybe to a...
I'm just wondering how Paul is carrying all this.
He does it after his hours with us.
Yeah, but Paul's typically serves, from what I know about him, he serves more than one county. So, I'm just trying to figure out how he's doing all of this.
Predominantly us.
Oh, he's just serving us now? Oh, okay.
He'll talk about, he, he does some for FSU. He's with us four and a half days. And coming up this year, we will have him five days plus an extra 30 minutes in the afternoon. So, anyway, I'll let Mr. Jimmy, I'll let Jimmy kind of speak real quick about.
You used all your time, Jimmy. No, we got plenty of time, Jimmy. Come on.
Jimmy didn't want it in friend.
You got to come earn your rights now, Jimmy.
And can I say real quick about that? And sometimes when somebody, you know, like this, they get a raise, you know, there can be a little division. These people over here, and Jenny can tell you, have fought me too to help Jimmy. So, that says a lot about him, his work ethic, and about us as a team.
There's nothing like community and family. That's, we are, this is, we're all family.
Sure, we stepped out, though. I'll want some more, but you know.
I'm going to start blushing pretty soon. But yeah, I had prepared to say all those things that Dr. Glover had said earlier. So, he kind of, you know, stole the thunder, but that's okay. But I do think I need to say a few things, though, just so that you know, I really did prepare for it. So, but thank y'all for letting me speak. Whenever Dr. Glover sent me an email, and Jody an email, and asked us to speak, I said, you know, I would, I would love to have that opportunity.
We hear Jody all the time. So, let us hear you. We hear Jody all the time. I'm just joking.
All right. Well, Jody, please, and I know you will, please chime in if, if I leave something out, or I didn't say something. But I will say, Dr. Glover's covered it all pretty in-depth already. But yeah, I told him absolutely I'd like to talk about it. After we were finished with it, I sent him a text, just telling him how I thought it was a first-class retreat. It was, it was a second to none. It's, it's a, one of the best trainings I've ever been a part of. So, I thank him for that. And I know it's something that he's wanted to do for a while, even, I think, before COVID, we were wanting to do something like this. And, and thankfully, we were able to pull it together with the help of Izzard. So, so that's the Institute of Small and Rural Districts. So, that proves that I did a little bit of studying on this. That's what Izzard is, is the Institute of Small and Rural Districts. But it was broken up over three days. The, the first day, we focused in on our students with disabilities and are planning the, the BPI, which is the best practices in inclusive education. Told you to practice this thing. And so, we looked at, at our district data, and we're wanting to move on that. Probably one of the most impactful things, though, was the second day, which was on Wednesday, whenever we looked at our Gallup data. And so, prior to heading over to the retreat, we each had to go in and answer, I think it might have been 100 questions. It was a lot of questions. And they had a timer on each of the other questions. So, they made sure that you didn't overthink them, and you just shot from the hip on it. And they use that to pull together your themes or your strengths. And each person had their top five. And it's somewhat similar, if you're familiar with the Myers-Briggs Personality Test, it's something similar, it's kind of in that vein, where we were each able to find what our strengths were. Like Dr. Glover said, what was interesting is not only did we get to see our strengths, but we were able to see the strengths of all of our teammates, and how all that kind of flowed together. And we had a lot of things that were similar. There were four domains, and it seemed like we were grouped in the domain about executing, which makes sense, because we're administrators, and administrators have to go and execute the plan. So, I found that interesting. But after, you know, meeting with the Gallup folks, and again, that was a first-class thing, the next day, we were able to look at our, like, district-wide goals and, and team goals and individual goals as well. And one of the things I enjoyed most was on that last day, we were able to get together with our pre-K to five teams. So, that was Laura and Kelly and Rachel and Courtney. We all sat down together. And what I loved about it is you could see... We all sat down together and what I loved about it is you could see the mutual respect that we all had for each other. And, uh, we were able to develop three SMART goals for our pre-K to five team. And, um, one of them, we're already going to be implementing starting on Thursday of this week. So, um, I think we took it real seriously. And I think we set, um, some SMART goals need to be achievable, but these are, it's gonna be, um, it's a difficult task, but one that I think we're up to. We looked at attendance and improving that as well as improving our achievement and then our collaboration. And so the collaboration is one we're gonna start on right away. Uh, but just, um, you know, in addition to that, I enjoyed the time to get to be around, um, you know, the other principals and deans and, and APs and all. And where you're not in the educational, you know, professional atmosphere, you could relax just a little bit when you went to a meal or something. And I got to know him better. Um, and, and since he's not here, I'll talk about him. But I was able to, to talk a lot with Coach Harvey and his wife Janice, and I really enjoyed that. And, um, finding out how much we had in common and everything and, and learning. He, he, he knows a lot, especially about nutrition. I learned a lot from, from Coach Harvey during that time, but, um, I was able to take my family with them, uh, with me and, and they were able to enjoy themselves. Um, they took their fishing rods, of course, and they went and, and hit those golf course ponds and they hooked them some nice bass until the management found out and they had to go back. Yeah. So again, it was, um, really an enjoyable trip and, um, Jody, please feel free to chime in if I left anything out on that.
And I'll just echo what you said. You know, we meet a lot as a team, um, but there's always a, a school emergency or God did have his attention specifically for what our needs are. And so it was nice to have the opportunity to meet professionally and to not have the distractions that can so frequently come when we're in this room. And be able to concentrate on ways to make our district better. And so, um, that was, uh, I, I appreciated that the, the most.
Absolutely.
And we did have, like you said, a unicorn from the Gallup. She's never seen this before. Somebody's results was a unicorn. And so that was Ms. Shears.
She was the unicorn. And raise, raise your hand if you had a, if you were a woo. I think we had a woo as well. We had some woo over there too. That's the Gallup, that's the Gallup. It's just, that's what they call it is woo. It's under the influence and.
My whole life aligned on that one day. It all makes sense.
That's how they influence people is through their woo. So. All right. Good. All right. Thank y'all.
Maybe next time superintendent won't take all your time. Still your thunder.
I want to know why we weren't invited.
Wendy, did they take you? They didn't? Oh, okay.
The only people that didn't get to go was, um, I think, um, Dan's probably mad at us, but Dan had so much going on with facilities and Chris.
And Pam.
And Pam.
Y'all should actually take.
Actually, actually, um, they did talk about how they thought it'd be so good to be able to do something like this, especially the Gallup with the board. And so I did mention that to Ms. Alice that maybe she could have some fun.
And get Ms. Angela to go with us too. I've often said when we go to the association meetings that I wish I had everybody here with us. So that they can see what we're seeing and they could experience what we're experiencing.
I, I would love to see, um, your district and school goals. I think that would be really neat if y'all ever would be willing to. I don't mean personal, Courtney. Personally, like as a board member, like I keep this constant vision and it, I mean, what my vision is, it really matters very little because it's your vision. That, that is in, in the day-to-day operations and that's where the, that's where the real work takes place. But what we do here is support that vision. So I would really, really love to have that and, and to be able to post it on my wall to constantly remind me of where, where you would like to see us go. And, and what your ideas are for our future, to make sure that when we're making decisions here, we're supporting what you want. Um, what Jeannie wants has very little to do with what's best for the Taylor County school system. But what you want is the most important thing because you're there. You know, you're listening to our teachers and our students and I, I think that's very important. I'm glad y'all got to do this because, especially the part about understanding your leadership styles. Because I think we all have a tendency to think we're perfect and right in a lot of ways and, and think we know when we're wrong and when we're not. And when you take those tests and it exposes your strengths and your strengths are your weaknesses too, it really makes you think about it, about yourself. So I'm so glad y'all got the opportunity to explore goals for our future and leadership styles. And that's amazing. The goals you did. Thank you.
Forward it to me, Jenny.
Okay. All right. Good, uh, good discussion time. This brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and board. Dr. Glover, if you have anything you'd like to share.
I'll just be real brief because Shannon's gonna give me a hard time in the morning about how much I've taught this evening. So, um, just, I know this year's been a really hard year for everybody. And I think it's been especially hard for our teachers, it's been hard for us academically. And I'm really nervous about us moving forward, um, academically. I do think that we're gonna have to put a hard campaign together that number one, we're in this together with our parents, with our employees, with our community, um, that we, I know we, it's a cliche that we're gonna have to work together. When I tell you we're really have to work together over the next year, attendance is gonna be huge. Kids have got to come to school over this next year, more than any year ever before. Because yeah, we're working hard with summer school, but we've had so many kids that are, are behind. I mean, we have talked, talked with the administrators, our focus, you know, we have focused, we had to focus on budget at one time, then curriculum, then it's been COVID. We're gonna really focus on curriculum this next year and everybody get on the boat with us, moving in one direction. And if some people don't want to get on the boat with us, that's okay. Because I expect the best from them, because I expect the best for our students. Not only are every kid important, but my kids in this school district, you have grandkids in this school district. Almost all of them out here has had a kid in our school district, going to have one or has one now. And we expect the best out of everybody. And we're gonna raise the bar and we're gonna raise rigor and we're gonna hold people accountable. And, you know, there's times where with family, we may fight and fuss, but we're not gonna get on social media and we're not gonna talk about each other and we're not gonna run each other down. We're either gonna be all together as one, but we're gonna show some people the door. If they decide they don't want to come here to work and they don't want to teach, there's other places hiring every day. And these administrators know that. Um, with also that being said, but we need our community to get behind us. If you look at some of the census data that I, that I looked at today, and if I understand it correctly, from the recent census, from the age, I think it's sixteen to eighteen to around sixty-five, only thirty-six percent of our population in Taylor County work. And we want to put a value on education. You know, it's just like, kind of like with, with the vapes. We're not selling vapes at school. They're coming from home. We can't teach the kid everything in the world they need to know. We have to have help from home. We have to have parents, make sure they get those kids up and send them to school. I've got kids, they don't want to come to school every day. And some days it's a struggle. Some days, honestly, it's a struggle for me to come to work, for all of us. But we have to do what's best for our kids and get them here. Um, and so when I tell you we're gonna need our parents to step up, we're gonna need them to, to step up. Um, I know Deidre said it before and it's just lately something that's been about, been about, you know, just the sadness. And I don't know how many times it's in the Bible, you can probably say, but love. Over the next year, this community's gonna need to have to love on our teachers, on our staff, most importantly, love our kids. Our kids have to come to school. I would tell you over the past year, I will, now some people did a very good job of it, but some didn't with virtual learning. Some people this year kept their kids at home and they done nothing. And it's gonna show in our, in our test scores, unfortunately. And I'm, I'm worried about what all our test scores are gonna look like in our future. If we don't set the bar high and hold people accountable. And that's every church, every grandparent, every aunt, uncle, making sure kids come, come to school. If you'll come to school, we're gonna provide the best and do the best that we can to educate them, but we have got to have them come, come to school. So, um, no, you're probably gonna see a little bit of a different focus this coming year, um, from the district team, from us. But like I said, we have to be here as one. We all squabble. Um, some of these administrators, we fight like cats and dogs about things like brothers and sisters. But we're united in, in the, in the public. I would never get on social media and say something about them or different things. You know, I know a lot of people's husband works in different areas. I mean, I just could tell you, if my wife went on social media talking about her boss or something or that who she works with, she probably wouldn't have a job the next day. And there's things in professional practices within DOE. If we have to start turning those people in, we will. And they'll do their own investigation. But, um, we're gonna come together and we're gonna love on each other. Um, I hopefully, you know, what I was talking about, goals, we're working on a um, something to put on our T-shirt this year, which is a big heart that can stand for love. But in there, it's got all the schools, all our employees, the community, parents. Um, and there's a lot in there that we're gonna try to, try to really work on hard this year because we have to step our game up. And, and we are gonna, we are gonna step up and they know that. That's a great team sitting there and they know the expectation. And it's what every one of us, um, expect. So sorry for going so long, but, um, just know there's probably this summer's gonna be some rough days to come with some of this data. But no, we're gonna stand behind them. We're gonna stand, um, we're gonna have faith in them. We're gonna have good people, good employees that want to work and work hard. And we're gonna get results from that, um, in the end because we have to. So.
She'll be sharing that data also with us, right?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Donnell.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna kind of echo a little bit of what Danny said. Um, I'm interested in that census data. Did you happen to look at what the data showed far as our population when it comes to education?
Yes. Eight percent of our, um, population, I think in Taylor County had an AA or higher.
Right. And I, I mean, that's, that's no surprise. It's been like that for years and I think it significantly drops. Or, you know, the census is every ten years, but I think it drops. But I, I, yeah. That's, that's a community issue, but at the same time, when, when you talk about education, it always come back to the school district. And I definitely think, I've told you this one time before, I think that's what Jeannie said here tonight, it's so important. I know for me, I don't know about nobody else, and I know y'all always look at me as a board member, but I'm a parent first. And I, for me, I don't think my kids are no better than the next child. But I do know, I've always believed that a good education starts from a solid foundation and it takes you anywhere. Now, in this past year, I've learned I need the Lord more than I need my education. However, I still feel like you still need a good education. But I definitely feel like to me, I would like to know my superintendent vision. And I would like to know how administrators' visions are lining up to his vision. I want to know how the schools line up to his vision. And I definitely feel like when parents know expectation both, both ways, I feel like you get more. But if I feel like you only putting expectation on me and I can't have the expectation of you, I'm just getting what you're giving, I don't think that work well. And I think that's why it's best that we look at our families as partners. You know, when people put their kids here, I think it's a partnership. I don't think I just have to take what you give me, just like no teacher want to take the child that just, just getting in their seat. Um, but I think another thing that is so important about the work we do is we have to know our community. We have to know the strengths of our community and we have to know the weakness of the community. I know when I became a board member, my social service, I used to always wonder, why do I keep getting jobs as social service? Like I went to school for something else. But it really prepared me for when I, when God blessed me to sit in this seat. And it lets me know that just what I see on the average in a classroom is nothing to what goes on in a home. But I've been in a home on a voluntary basis and I've been in a home on a court order basis. It's a difference. But you see a whole lot and it does gives you a different way to look at stuff when you're seeing kids in the classrooms and you send them outside at home. So I don't think no teacher signed up to be a social worker. I don't think no teacher signed up to be a doctor. But the last few months, I've had the opportunity where I've played all different kind of roles. And so I've, I've had the opportunity to experience more of, you know, the day-to-day things of a school. And my hat goes off to people that go and show up every day. It is, it's a very fun job, but it's a very hard job and it's a very demanding job. However, I still think in order for the community to get on board, the community has to know the vision. And you know, Dana, I've told you this before, I feel like it's gonna start with you navigating the path as to what this community needs to expect and what to look forward to. I, I mean, I don't know what your plan is unless you present it to me, but I definitely feel like you're in a leadership role as a superintendent. And I feel like it's your responsibility to paint the vision as to how you want people to come in here and, you know, for things to be, con- conduct themselves as well as to know what they're getting far as when they enroll their kids in school. So I definitely feel like you need to lead that conversation. And like I say, the more information you provide to the board, for us knowing the visions and the goals, again, that help us in order to support that or whatever. I definitely feels like community buy-in, the more community buy-in you get, the more support you get. Like you said, it's, it's great to hear that y'all was able to reach out to businesses and they able, they was able to support you guys going out of town and making sure that you was taken care of. Um, I've seen a lot of that lately and I just, it amazed me how communities, I mean, how community partnerships do support businesses. They see a business to come in and buy a whole kindergarten class or to buy all kindergarten classes. Like what teacher wouldn't want that support? What administrator wouldn't want that support? But I feel like in order for us to get that type of support, we have to put more out there far as our expectations and our goals and where we see ourselves going. I definitely think it has to be a level playing field. And I think that comes from boundaries. There's nothing wrong with having work relationships and people getting to know one another. But I definitely feel like when you put boundaries in there, you don't have to worry about people thinking they can feel comfortable to go on social media. Now, you can't control what people doing. But I think if people understands that first and foremost, you have to be professional and they're held accountable for how they conduct themselves, I think that'll stop a lot of that. So I feel like again, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work and we make progress. I mean, can't knock anything trying. But I definitely think that, you know, we gotta do stuff across the board. It can be one individual and somebody else over here doing whatever they want to do. I think professionalism has to go across the bar. I had opportunity, you know, to meet with Kiki yesterday, Ms. Poole. And, you know, we was able to have a conversation and she showed me some information. And, you know, it was a great opportunity to sit down and to see how she's transitioning, transitioning into her position. She definitely seems like she's taking it, um, very serious, not that she wouldn't. But she definitely feels like she's already getting vested in her position. So I enjoyed that opportunity, but I think the more we have that opportunity, again, the more we're able to see where the district is going. I'm glad the districts are A, but I know this last year has saw us back. And I don't, I don't think none of, nobody is gonna be in a position to point a finger, but where do we go from here? We know things existed before COVID and we know how we're coming out of COVID. And I, I'm not even saying we're coming out of COVID because we don't know what's next. But I, I did enjoy hearing tonight that you guys went off, took, um, a few days away from the district. Y'all had opportunity to learn one of the things about one another and to learn some di- different things you come back to, brought back to the district. But like I say, Dana, I, I do look forward to seeing you putting a vision together and putting it out there to the community. And like I say, let us push that and to see what support we get back from the community. But I definitely think that's something you need to put a lot of thought into. As far as having a vision and how your administration will line up to that. Whether you do it on a three-year plan or a five-year plan, but each year how your administrator will line up to making sure your vision is carrying out for us this district.
That's the area that we, that's why we set some time to work together to help be in that area.
Right. And I mean, there's nothing wrong with you receiving support from your administration because, again, you're at the district office. They're the ones in the schools. But again, I definitely think it helps from a community standpoint to know the vision of the superintendent and where he plans to take the education.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Agnes.
Oh, and congratulations to Mr. Brayton Knight. Oh, and congratulations to Mr. Bray tonight. I, I'm happy we have made some improvement.
Ms. Agner?
Well, I'm a little jealous, I wanted to go with y'all, but that's okay, maybe next time.
You didn't go with us last week to Tampa. You, you don't go with us to Tampa, how you going to go with them?
I'm, well, this is true. We'll have to work on the dates. Um, no, I'm excited for y'all, to, community is great, and education is so important, but belief is even more important. When you can teach a child to believe in themselves, they will. And I think that's what y'all were cultivating in this meeting, is a community that helps people to believe in themselves so they can help others believe in themselves. So I think our community needs a lot of that when we see the statistics and we hear the statistics and we know, um, and there's a lot of poverty in our county, and a lot of students don't think they'll ever get anywhere because this is the way it's always been, this is the way it'll always be, my family's always been this way. But then you have the exception of that child that says, you know what, I'm going to do better. And that's what teachers do, and they make them believe in themselves, and I think we've got a great group of people to do that. And I'm very thankful that our superintendent took the time to do this with y'all. And I think that it's a beginning of a healing and a beginning of a strength. And I think we had a boat that had a lot of holes, and I think we were sinking. And I think we've plugged those holes, and I, and I hope we'll continue to build that so that we all travel in the same direction. And I appreciate you sharing all of your, um, goals and what you feel like needs to happen with us. And congratulations, Mr. Bray, again.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, and, um, Jimmy, congratulations, yay! I mean, I love all y'all right now, Danny, I love everybody in this room right now. Y'all are all wonderful people. So I'm going to just pass, share the love. But when we were in Tampa last week, there was a young man there that spoke to us, he was a young black man, and he talked to us about social justice. And I, like, listening to y'all talk, I didn't plan to do this, but it's a note that I wrote down, and it's something that he said, and I think it's true for all students. And he said that, um, as far as social, social ju- justice, cultural awareness is that I see you. Cultural inclusion is I hear you. Cultural competence is I am willing to meet you where you are. And he said the best teachers that he had in his life, and the reason he was standing where he was, was because he had a teacher that was, that loved him first and taught him second, and took the time to see where he wa- where he was and why he was the way he was from his home life. And, and I think that when we talk about improving attendance, and we talk about improving scores, and we, and we have to recover from this nightmare of a year that we just went through, and, um, that, that is going to be a very important thing for all of our students, that we, that we learn to, and we have to be willing to meet them where they are and build from there. And we've got to understand where they're coming from when we do that. So, um, that just, I just wanted to share that with y'all. And, um, also, I'm so excited about the new bus stuff with Wendy, it is amazing. And the Where's the Bus app is going to be amazing too, for, I know our parents are going to love it. I love it, I don't have a child on the bus anymore, but I know, I've talked to several board members, and I've probably emailed you about it, I've emailed Chris about it before you, that have that in their district. And they said the parents just love it, and that you don't have phone calls, the Where's My Kid phone call, or the Where's the, you know, it ends all of that because they can see. And it really does, it's transparency and communication, and it's a lot of things that you need and, and our bus drivers need in their job, you know, to keep that. So that's wonderful.
I think it's great for when time change too, like, I know some people.
So, um, and one other thing, and something that I learned this past week, or, or some people talked to us about, and I, I just loved, was a student-driven, um, education plan. And, and, um, I just talked to Danny about it, but the key takeaway from it is that, um, you want to ship the ownership to the students, and you want to hear what they need for us to educate them. What are you missing? And I think when we have conversations with them and, and let them tell us how we can, we can sit in rooms and dream up all the best things in the world for them, but they can tell us what they're missing and what they need. And that is a short, that's really the shortcut to getting there instead of all the guessing. So there are districts who have done that, and they've had amazing results with it. So that was one other thing that I wanted to share. Other than that, I'm just sharing the love with all y'all.
Was that the Elevating Student Voice workshop? Or you went with that one?
Oh, okay. It was amazing. It was called Elevating the Student Voice, and it really.
Thank you, Ms. Harleton.
Uh, yes, just to build on and not repeat a lot of what I said, but the FSBA, one of the, not only do they have excellent speakers, um, the networking is what is, you know, when you can find out what's going on in the other districts and, and compare it, is, is really great. Congratulations to Mr. Bray. Um, I know he's, uh, um, he's probably not heard that enough, but anyway, we'll keep on. Uh, Jody, the excellent pinning ceremony the other night, that was your largest class, I believe you said, since we've, this was the fifth year? This was six, but this was the largest class. So, that's, uh, yes, very good.
Always cry.
Oh, I, I was invited, and Deidre was there to go to the Dreamers Endors little celebration yesterday, and that's always nice that they celebrate the Dreamers Endors with the community, and it's just, uh, um, it, it's just, it's great because of the character and the leadership that it instills in those youngsters. I think it's, that's a, that's a great program with Ms., Ms. Woodfall. Um, the other thing is that, um, um, I want to thank all of y'all. Um, I know that y'all, uh, somebody asked me, said, what are you doing with all your time during the summer? So I'll ask y'all, what are y'all doing with all your time this summer? That's what I'm, I know, summer, just because it's summer doesn't mean that school's out and closed. I know summer school's going, you know, really, really strong, but it's just a, just a lot going on. But before we know it, it's going to be time to open those doors again. And I know, uh, based on what Dr. Glover said, that we, we've got some challenges ahead of us, but, but we've got a group that can, can meet those challenges, and we'll be right there with you. So with that, um, I think that's all I had.
Can I ask one more, Danny? Um, I think it's at the fourth, the fourth weekend of this month, we got some kids going down to, is it Orlando or Tampa for some type of state recognition? You might want to, um, no, not that, um, it's some kids, I guess, don't got some type of designation, um, from the state. I don't know if it was.
That one, Dimitri?
Yeah, so I don't know, you might want to put that on our agenda in July, or our next agenda, I don't forgot one. But it's a, they going to get some type of scholar recognition, so you might want to make sure we recognize them here.
Talking about recognition, because we need to make sure, but, um, I want to make sure y'all all know that Ms. Tillman, um, the Florida FFA Association Board of Directors, Officers, and Staff has chosen her as an honorary state FFA degree. And that's a really big deal that Ms. Jody was chosen.
Yay!
We need some pictures of that.
That is awesome. National.
Oh, next Thursday. At what time? Cool. Okay.
So from there, they, if they win, they go to international.
Okay, I told them I'd go be a chaperone. I had one of, it's our next meeting, July the 20th.
29th, 29th. No, we got another meeting this month, right?
No, no.
29th of June.
June 29th, that's why I say.
We don't have, it's, yeah.
It's June 29th.
Okay.
I thought you said July.
I thought it was too.
I need to clarify, make sure, because we were talking about for our leadership, um, meeting we went to, we got those donations. I called the, our big vendors, we got a lot of money with, I didn't bother our local people so much. So I kind of hit them up kind of hard and said, hey.
Did they send some? Did they send something?
They did.
Oh, okay, well, good.
They were really good, good to us. And also on the census, just Tillman to get me this later, yep, we know that, you know, only 8% has AA or higher, but we know that a lot of them has post-secondary, that you can still make a lot of money in our community and not, and not have, have a degree. The other thing is just.
That's a blessing and a curse. In community, you can make a decent wage, but you can have a high school diploma.
Right.
Which is blessing and curse.
Yeah, that's a lot of money at a young age, but, yeah.
You just stop and look at the statistics, if you have a degree, what are you going to do in Taylor County? What else are you going to do in Taylor County? So that's the reason a lot of, and then, like I said, most of my class left here because if they got a college degree, they left to get a job. So, a- again, but again, we have 900 people a day moving to the state of Florida. We need to be working on getting, because they're going to bring their businesses, they're going to bring their children. So we need to be working on this district to make it, continue to make it the best it can be. And hopefully we'll draw in some of that to come here to help.
You can teach, you can be a board member. I'm for real, you, you got to think, I never thought I was sitting in this chair, I never thought I would live in Taylor County.
But it's an occupation.
So you never know.
That's a lot of the problem, is you get a degree, but what are you going to do?
And she was going to have to retire from the newspaper one day. Oh, for real, she been there how long, you said? Yeah, she said that at the awards night, so.
Okay, well, uh, are you kidding, Ms. Harleton?
But she said that, what she said about when the kids, they graduating, but you follow them over the years from the AB column, from making, you know, when we put them in there for the honor roll, you recognize their names, yeah. Yeah.
I'm very proud of our school district and our children.
Yes, yes.
Okay, in closing, I guess it's my turn to say anything or something anyway. Uh, been a lot of things said here tonight, been a lot of decisions made that are going to be getting things ready for 21, 22 school year. A, a lot of good thoughts, a lot of excitement and so forth from, uh, maybe some refreshing that's taking place in, uh, in some of our, um, administrators, where they're able to go and to spend a few days, uh, you know, at a different venue. A lot of good things said around the board. Um, and yet some concerns have been shared with us, and that is, uh, that we know that it's been a very difficult nearly two years in education with our kids, and we all will have to admit that, uh, yeah, uh, you know, our kids, a lot of them are behind educationally. But it's not just here, it is everywhere. So it's not like, okay, you know, my, it's our fault, well, we had to do the very best we can do, just as everybody else has. But I, I'm, I'm glad to hear the excitement, goals being made, how we're going to address this coming school year, all the hard work that's being, being already put into place. Uh, but also this, is that we'll never reach those goals and never have the best that we desire to have unless we do, as what has been said here tonight, and that is that we have to walk together, agree, and work together. And everybody do their very best. And, uh, you know, can two go down the road together unless they agree? And as the adage is that, um, you know, united you stand, but divided you fall. So, uh, it's good to take from this meeting tonight that, uh, you know, we're not just talking about the past, but we're thinking about the future, we're planning for the future, we're trying to prepare for the future. And it's good to be part of that, all of us, it takes every one of us in this room, everybody. And it takes the parents, it takes kids, it takes everybody, it takes the community, okay? So, we have a, you know, we have something to, to, to work towards and something to be part of. And I, I hope that all of us will be proud to be working together and work together for the very best of our community. I'm proud of my community. You know, I've, you know, I'm nearly 70 years old, and this is my home. This is where I was born and raised, I was born at home way back younger. This is my home, and, uh, I've raised my family here and, and, and all that. So I'm proud of Taylor County. Um, not always proud of some of the things that we do, but, uh, I'm proud of Taylor County. So, um, you can ruffle my feathers when you start talking about my home, my county. I love it, and I love the people here. And so we need to work together for the very best of everybody. If we do that, we'll have a good community. All right, with that said, do I have a motion and second that we adjourn?
Motion, second.
All right, motion second been made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed, meeting adjourned.